This year, fairly recently.
Yes, correct.
Yeah, I heard that. Well, it's no secret, probably a lot of people, that we, these have been wet years, extremely wet, after a long period of not being very wet. Do you suppose that that water level changes when it doesn't rain for three or four years? And that maybe that threat to the base material is not that predominant as that soil dries out underneath?
Yeah, there's no doubt the water certainly does fluctuate with the climate and how much rain we've had. There, we're going off the best information we have now. We could, you know, we could potentially wait and try in a drier year, but based on the information we have and the consistency with how moist it is, that was our underlying reason.
So there aren't any other borings that you could reference from a few years prior to that?
We do have some. I can't recall them off the top of my head, but we do have some, I believe it was 2015 or 2016. We did do some more borings when we had to develop the pavement classification number.
Was it similar, or was it, did it change?
I believe there was still a fairly high moisture. That was when it was drier. It wasn't quite as high, but I'm, like I said, I don't want to speak inaccurately, but I can certainly look back at those records and see what that was.
Just curious. And then, and then you talk about the surface deterioration, but I was a little bit unclear. I still didn't hear anything about any chunks falling off yet, but I did notice, you mentioned that the, the filling and the grooves, the traffic grew, were actually, was, is that the material that was pulling out?
Correct. So, yeah, to date, and correct me if I'm wrong, based on the airport inspections, we don't have chunks coming out yet.
Oh, okay.
But the grooves are, I want to say they're maybe about three eighths to a quarter inch wide and about just as deep, so they're very small, narrow squares, so as they start to wear and little pieces come off, they do wear. And then as we're trying to, you know, come in with this heavy pressure equipment to get the rubber off, that's where some of these just started, started peeling off. So it was the little pieces of the grooves, not chunks out of the...
And as an expert in this field, you, that finds out perfectly typical, I imagine, that the, the, the rubber's in between the grooves and it's going to have to be removed one way or the other before you can complete your work. Isn't that so?
I was looking, could you repeat the question?
That rubber has to come out one way or another, or can you go over the surface with it?
Oh, okay. You definitely want to get as much rubber off as you can because you're affecting the bond to the, to the, to the surface of the material. If, if the rubber stays there, it does, you know, it's just not, it's not allowing the water to get off. It can plug the grooves, so it's definitely the intent to remove the rubber to the fullest extent.
Is that pretty thick rubber, Jeff?
It's, it definitely varies, but I know like a lot of the bigger commercial airports, they're out there with rubber removal machines several times a year, almost monthly every other month. So it's, it's actually harder to, it's harder on the pavement to remove the pavement markings because of the pores in the pavement to try to get the markings off to get that bond than it is the rubber. But it, both of them do over time. As the surface of the pavement dries out, the oils are, you know, moving out of the surface as it kind of dehydrates, they are more susceptible to, to failure.
Kelly?
Last question for me, I promise, is the difference of the $4 million roughly in two weeks of savings on option two, where, the difference, where would that $4 million be coming from? Do we know? Does FAA give us a check and say, "Just do it"? Or is that in our, we're saving from the airport reserves, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, who pays for it?
Yeah.
So we had the project slated for around $8 million originally, and the project, as you can see, has escalated from what we had hoped the project would come in at. The lowest it's escalated to is about $12 million, so we're actually looking to the FAA from the Airport Improvement Program Grant Fund to try to find another $4 million in discretionary dollars to get to the lowest figure that you see there. So, yeah, if we were to tell the FAA that we wanted to go to the higher figure and have more complications with the aeronautical services in to boot with that, they're probably going to look at us like we've lost our minds first, and then they're going to say, "Well, what about the four we already got to find?"
Okay, good. I asked what I was seeing, but I hadn't heard it, so I wanted to make sure we covered that.
So we still get the 90, 95%?
The percentages stay the same.
Same.
That's correct, yes.
Jeff, do you have any additional information?
I do.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Thank you very much. A couple of questions. I should have asked it when you made the first pitch. If you can put the three pictures up there where we have the, the stripes and the grooves, please. Bingo. I thought I had heard you say, "I thought," I had heard you say that there were chunks coming off, and I should have asked you if you could point them out. Are there chunks coming out in any of that? And, because I think I heard you say, as the picture identifies, and I, I don't know nothing about the airplanes, but I need to ask the question.
So the grooves, when you have a newer surface or even a 10-year-old surface, the grooves are still intact. If you look at, so all of, like on this picture, there's heavy, heavy weathering on that surface. It's, it, like I said, it's, I'm trying to explain it the best I can. So basically, when you first cut a groove, it looks like basically, I'm trying to think of another analogy, like if you had a piece of Portland cement concrete and you cut a joint, that's what normally, that's what it looks like the day after you do it. And those grooves do stay intact for considerable amount of time. These are heavily weathered, and they're, when I said pieces, I meant microscopic pieces that are coming off the edge of the grooves.
That answers my, that answers my question then. The second question on the slide where we show the two cost figures, I may have misunderstood, but option one, the rehabilitation, the expectation of the life of that would be 10 years?
Correct.
And so the one that is cheaper, the life expectation is 20 years?
That's correct.
There was a question with respect to data from previous years, and you mentioned something about 2015. Can you get that data and share it with the Oxnard Authority?
Absolutely. Yep, we do have, it was a geotechnical report done, I want to, it was 2015 or 2016.
Okay. And back to the, the difference in the two costs. You mentioned the drainage system. Is there a drainage system at the airport now?
The system, the underdrain system with the small pipes running down both sides of the runway, there is not.
If you put a drainage system, how much more would it cost, and how much would it improve the life?
Increase it. So the drainage, the underdrain system is included in that total? And if we did break out...
What's included in the...
I didn't, I didn't realize that.
Yeah, I can give you the, I can give you a breakout of the...
And, and the underdrain system is included in both totals, or just one of them?
It is included in both totals.
Both totals.
Well, that's good.
Those are my questions. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Jeff.
So, based on our discussion so far, obviously, our recommendation is for the, the 20-year pavement, the reconstruction option. Basically, we did, also using the FAA software, we did run a useful life, and, you know, the pavement has reached its useful life. Based on the figures that we have from the geotechnical investigation, it is time for an improvement. We feel that the best money served for the longest longevity is going to be to strengthen the subgrade and do the, the chemical treatment stabilization, as well as, we didn't talk yet about the constructibility. The good thing is, when we do the lime treatment, the material can be very, very wet, actually to the point that they have to wet it more as they, it's basically like a rototiller where they put this lime or cement in, and then they compact it, and it turns very, very hard over a couple-day process. When we, when we don't do that type of process, if we open it up, what happens is the pavement traps a lot of that moisture underneath, and as this heavy equipment starts working on it, it can start pumping and moving, which then we have to dig out and overexcavate, and it can, can add a extensive time to the construction schedule, so the reconstruction option minimizes that potential.
So your recommendation is, recommendation number two, and FAA concurs with that recommendation?
That's correct.
And I said, "Are we okay with that?"
Absolutely. Yes.
So as part of the analysis, the FAA reviewed our geotechnical report, they actually want the working files from our software development and basically run their own models and confirm, and we had a very good conference call with the, the Department of Airports for their concurrence.
Okay, we have recommendation one and two. Just Borrell.
How comfortable do you feel with this 12-week closure?
Very comfortable. As comfortable as we can be based on all the information now. We've, we even have, I believe it's about a one-week contingency at this point because we are at a preliminary design level. We didn't want to max it out to every single element, but as we further refine the design, I'm confident in the 12 weeks. But also worth noting, that was 12 weeks of the full runway closure. Some of the grooving, so as, based on the category of aircraft there is, the aircraft that use the airport, we do have to put the grooves back. So after the project's done and the asphalt has some time to cure, we do come back later and put the grooves into marking, but that can all be night work during off-peak closure, which would still allow daytime operations.
Can you go over the timing?
One last question, one last question, please. When you're talking about dry, is this similar to when they make a dam, they do dry cement, and they pack the dry cement? You don't, you don't pour cement?
This comes out, it's, it's a little different than...
Do you know what I'm talking about?
Not exactly.
Okay, there are times when they, even when they do freeway jobs, it may not all be wet cement that's poured. They pour dry, and they pack it, and the concentration of whatever the mixes and the chemicals they put, it gets hard without the water.
This is a little, this is a different process than that. This, this is literally a huge, huge, like a rototiller that you'd have in a garden. They come and lay down the product on the subgrade in several inches of lime. They come out with this machine, mix it in, that's heavily hydrated, they got a water truck hooked up to the machine that's mixing it. They come, then they put a huge, it's called a Z-grid roller that compacts it. Then they come back the next day and mix it again and recompact it, then they let it sit for about five to seven days to fully cure and harden.
Thank you for your explanation. Thank you.
Can you go over the timeline? I think it's your next slide?
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Chairman?
I think we have one, one question. What, are we okay with the question?
That's all I was waiting for.
Okay.
Hi, Melania.
Go ahead.
At the risk of sounding rhetorical, I would nevertheless like to see the soil borings, the conclusions, and the sanctioning by the FAA. I'd like to see a copy of that, just for my own laughs, if I may. Thank you.
And I did ask for the earlier ones, too.
Yeah, so, yes, we have an action item, getting the 2015 or 2016, the previous boring reports, and also FAA concurrence.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just for clarity, I want to make sure staff follows up exactly what you're looking for. The soil borings from 2015, 2016?
No, the current ones.
The current, okay.
Everything to date, that they supported their conclusions on and their, and their design issues.
Okay, and...
And then the actual opinions by whomever that was that had the final opinion, not everybody's, and then the final sanctioning by the FAA.
When you say final sanction, I just want to make sure I understand what you mean the...
Well, he mentioned that they had put it in their computer files, run their own analysis, and come up at everything that was hunky-dory. I'd like to see that, too.
Got it. Do we have something from the FAA that would...
I believe it was a conference call.
It was a conference call, and I believe, though, that the, we might have received an email that said, "No comment." So no comments, meaning we accept it.
So it was a verbal, is that what it was? A verbal recommendation, or...
It was both. It was a verbal, so we had a, we had conference calls to talk about the, the work, the changes from rehabilitation due to the data that was presented, and then the, I believe we have an email...
I don't recall any email, Erin.
What information do you have? You can share that with us.
And I would, I would ask whether we, you know, the data, the raw data is available? We don't, we haven't, the report is going to be filed, but it hasn't yet, so are we, so at what point?
Oh, yeah, we could, I'm, I'm fine sharing anything we have.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Is that okay with them?
Well, I'm still, I'm still a little bit confused. If the FAA did a mock-up based on the Oxnard as representative of that, you would think they would have something in their file to show what the results were. And if that, it wouldn't have to be a form of, you know, anything, just if they ran a mock-up and it's available, I'd love to see a copy of it. And if not, then they didn't run a copy, or whatever.
Give us that information.
Whether they actually ran it, so basically, they requested all of our design files, so we send them the Geotech Report, our pavement analysis, and then it's called Farfield is the program that we use that puts in the fleet mix, the parameters. So they request all those files. I didn't specifically, they said they approved the recommendation, and that was during a conference call that we had to basically walk through our entire analysis. So whether they actually ran it, I'm not exactly sure. But they did approve the, the recommendation that we were...
That you provided.
Providing them.
Could have been a Farfield instead of a mock-up. Okay, all right, well, sorry for the...
General Manager, with the impact that this will have on a particular community in this county, can we make sure that we get every bit of information we need? And if we do get put, for lack of a better word, somebody would be put in a spot where they could be exposed, do we have minutes of those phone conversations? Because he said, she said, if it comes, there's a problem later on, we're the small guy in this story.
Yeah, let me just maybe, no, 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 I understand. Let me try to maybe clarify a little bit. First of all, it's our airport. If we decide we don't want to push forward with the project, that's, we own the airport, so if you, if we as a...
My concern is not whether we push forward. If there is a problem later on, we want to be able to cover our back.
No, no, right, I just, I want to, I want to clarify a couple of things, though, that I'm hearing in questions. I mean, we, we don't lose rights to the airport, so we, if we decide, for whatever reason, we just want to keep going along and, and do whatever we're doing without improving the airport, we can do that. When it comes to the FAA, they lean heavily on the sponsors' engineers, and, and they either approve a project or they don't approve a project. I'm not sure how much database the FAA is going to have to give you, is my point. Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, if you know something I don't know, but my, my experience is, the sponsor and the engineers that work for that sponsor, in this case, it's Mead and Hunt, they feed that information to the FAA. The FAA, it takes that information, and they either concur with it, or they debate it, or they kick it back, and, and they do something, or they push you in a different direction. I don't know, are we going to have anything that we would have to back up any kind of, or is there anything you guys are aware of that we would have from the FAA that would, besides their acceptance of the project?
You're correct on that. No, nothing that they, it would be their concurrence.
I mean, that's, that's about it. They either say, "Okay, we agree, this is worth it, we're going to spend the money," or they say, "No, it's not, go back and do your homework."
It was no big deal to me. They simply mentioned it. I thought that'd be great to have a copy of it. It's not available, that's fine.
Absolutely, but I was also talking about, I'm not sure we have records of phone calls or anything. It's, you'll know if they agree because they give us the check.
So Mead and Hunt has, has a reputation, and Jeff has a reputation, that they've been doing good work for 20 years and so forth, so the FAA relies on that, and we also, on their reputation and their work and professionalism.
They won't, they won't fund it unless they agree with it. It's, so if we, if we're getting the check, you know they agreed with it. It's that simple from the FAA.
And, pardon me, the only reason I'm beating this dog to death is because of the mere fact that it is, it's going to cost a fortune, it's going to take a lot of time, a lot of time. Pardon me. And, and right now, it's kind of all hunky-dory, it's going to be shut down. Well, for us users, Dr. Fessel, chime in any time, we are very concerned about the time the airport shut down. We don't have, we don't have hangars anywhere else to put our airplanes because they're a little bit too big. We don't have anywhere to go. We basically use all, all the functionality.
Can we do it tracksy way?
Well, there aren't any answers on that either yet, hopefully, but that hasn't been too successful in the past, so, you know, we have, we have big concerns.
We need to expedite.
And if there's alternate ways to do it, and it'll last, gee, another 25 years, maybe we can get by. That's all, I'm not trying, you know, just not trying to be the devil's advocate here, but I want, I've taken, wanted to see, taking a hard look at this thing, I still haven't gotten any information in the last two years, and I just want to feel, feel good at night.
So Kip, let's get a...
I want to make sure you get everything you want, Mr. Calhoun. That's why I'm trying to make sure that I understand going, leaving here tonight, what are you looking for at this point, besides the borings?
Borings?
Okay.
Calculations, and I don't mean reams and reams of data, just, you know, their conclusions, who made those conclusions? Who is it in, in Mead Hunt that made the decision to go ahead, base their conclusion? Who's the, who has the final say-so on the determination? And a copy of that document, and, and I guess, since the FAA's...
I can answer that question now.
Okay.
The conclusions are derived from our engineers, which is why we have them here tonight. The final decision, there's no document. It'd, it'd be either the approval of the grant or the non-approval of the grant, application that we put in. So there's no document that, that, that there is to provide to you for the approval. But the conclusions that we have came from our engineers, which is why we asked them here tonight. And that's why we wanted them to come, so you could, so you could dive as deep as we need to dive and, and answer all of our questions.
Well, pardon me, I guess from their conclusions, they went ahead and went with the most expensive, time-consuming way to do it, is that, or am I being naive?
I think we actually chose the cheaper route.
That's right.
We chose the, or they chose, they, they recommended...
Time-wise, pardon.
Yeah, they, they recommended the cheaper and the lesser time route, the 12 weeks instead of the 14 and a half weeks, and the 11.8 million instead of the 15.1 million. So they actually, we're actually choosing the cheaper route and the less closure of the time.
But, but Kip, you have the current boring information, right?
I have it with me.
And that's, that's one of the things that you wanted, too, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can, we can get you the boring data, for sure. I just want to make sure I get whatever you're asking for.
That's, that's it.
Just the boring data, okay. Yeah, we can get you that. There won't be a document, though, that says, the people, that is the document, right there. That's, that's our source, that's our engineers, and they're the ones that make the recommendation. There's no document that backs that up other than something like what you're seeing tonight.
They did the boring, and, and that's what you found out, is that correct?
So, yeah, we did some borings. So everything we're talking about with the pavement design is one small element of a whole report that the FAA blesses or approves before we go to the next stage. This is, so as part of that, as part of that report, that's a report, a preliminary design report that I stamp and signed with my engineering steel.
Well, no, that's, that's a good point. Is that about, that's about finished, too, right, or is...
We're getting close.
We're getting close, so we can provide that.
Okay, that's what, that's what Calhoun wanted.
That would work, the preliminary design...
That'd be fun.
Okay, now, it's not complete yet, but we can, when it's, absolutely, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
And then a wet one when it's wet.
And, yeah, so right now, the Geotech Report is still in draft. We like to keep the documents in draft form in case the FAA or anybody comes back with comments, and we incorporate them all at once, but we're prob, we're a little ways out on the, on the draft, on the complete draft report pending some other evaluation and coordination with the FAA, but before that's finalized, we will certainly share the draft report with...
We'll, we'll get you the draft report next week. I mean, where it is in draft form today, you'll just have to understand it's still draft, it's not complete.
And one of the things that I hear that we're concerned about the timeline, make sure that, that we expedite, you know, the, the work, and do good work, of course, but expedite it so.
And we are totally, totally relieved that it's not going to be a $35 or $40 million removal and replacement for, it might have lasted five or six months, so we are very appreciative of that. Thank you.
So we, we got recommendation one and two of, for the, what's the pleasure of the...
This was an informational report, Mr. Chairman. We just, I, I, there was enough good questions in the April meeting that I wanted our engineers to come and dive deeper so that we can, we can answer those questions and get you guys to a comfort level that you want to have.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing it.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Jeff, thanks a lot. I think we...
Okay, can we just real quickly, Jeff, you had a couple more slides, and they're finishing up here.
Oh, sorry.
So I just wanted to make sure everyone saw the timeline. The next slide was talking about funding and the FAA program and so forth, so if everyone's good with not reviewing that, that's great. I just want to make sure whatever we do is communicated to our community, because as you can hear from our board, we've had a lot of questions for many years, and there's great concern in using the hangars and how the operations will be even for the 12 weeks or before or after. So the airport staff, if you could just please make sure the communication that goes on as to what's happening at the airport is, is done, I'd really appreciate that.
We're going to have a very intensive communication campaign. There's going to be different things, like workshops that we involve or inform the community of the different phases of the design and what it's going to look like before we ever get to the project, and then there's going to be a community platform of, of communication that we do during the project in addition to websites, information that we put up, and messaging, and so, yes, there's going to be a very intensive messaging platform for this.
At what point would you expect to see the FAA come back with, "Yes, we have the money"?
That's a great question. We were in line, if you will, is about the easiest way I know to put it, for the $8 million. The other $4 million is not yet identified, and so this whole project might take a backseat for some reason because of that other $4 million. Now, if, if we as a community, particularly if we as a community decide we're not excited about the project, we would want to be forthcoming to the FAA about that as well, and, and, and help them to make it take a backseat and line us up for a time we are excited, because the last thing we want to do is cash in our cards to get something extra when we aren't excited about it. So we really either need to be on board to try to do this project, or we need to reevaluate what our needs are, our interests are right now at this time, and communicate that properly to the FAA.
Would you envision that if you pushed hard for the extra $4 million, that we might have to trade a couple of years from starting the Camryale?
No, sir. No, I don't think, the, the two are totally different. I don't envision that at all.
Okay.
Chairman, may I ask a question? The, the period of construction that's identified here, is that driven by weather or airport use, or how is that?
Do you mean these dates?
Yeah, but particularly the, the period of construction.
Yeah, so, and this is going back to understanding that you have a single runway system, it's going to be closed for a duration of time. So the FAA grants aren't an exact science. They oftentimes come in September, and then also the, there's a state match that provides additional financial support for the project. The reason we show the June 2021 start time is so that we're not starting in a, potentially a wet season, and it, and it's closed longer, but primarily that we can have a start date in the contract documents, so already knowing almost a year in advance, we know what those dates are going to be, unless something really goes awry with the funding, so that everybody knows, okay, we're, we're going to be in the peak summer of the season, longest working day, longest daylight hours available, and it's easy to program. And as well, even though it's the following year and the contractors have to hold their bid price, we often do see that they know that their crews are booked that entire three months, they're not trying to juggle all their bids at the time, so we've seen this approach work quite well based on the FAA timeline, so that's the reason that we're starting the construction the next early summer.
Got it, thank you.
I believe our project manager, Aaron Powers, wanted to make a comment?
Yes, you know, something that hasn't been addressed is that in order to be eligible to receive the $8 million that they've programmed so far, and then also to pursue that gap, we have to continue to design and plan on the timeframe that, to meet FAA deadlines. And so one of the key factors here is that those deadlines are always very tight, so we actually, in order to be even close to making the timeframes for the 2020 grant, will need to bring before you next month in Aug, sorry, what? I'm sorry, July, so that we can make an August board meeting, the final design contract for a runway reconstruction. So we will definitely be working to get that information to, you know, to authority member Calhoun, right, as soon as we can, but that's just something that we do have a time pressure that we do have a time pressure on, so we, we don't have a lot of time to, to, you know, agree to a path forward or not, at some point, we will lose the ability to be aligned for funding for the next cycle.
Question, question. I'm asking a question just for my own information, not a slight on anybody's professional work. In issues like this, does there come an opportunity, or in your past experience, either of you, that somebody asks for a second opinion?
Yes, I have seen projects where a second opinion was warranted, I do not feel this is anywhere close to what I've experienced in those circumstances before.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is that your last, do you got anything else that you want to say?
Yeah, I believe that's it.
Okay.
Unless there's any other questions, thank you for your time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Appreciate it. Good discussion. Okay, the next item is 6B, which is authorization for the Director of Airports.
Chairman, I apologize, I guess we do need a motion to receive, I'm not used to this one, but this is a, this is an item here for discount. To receive and file, I'm not used to that, sorry.
First? Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that's approved, thank you.
Sorry about that. Okay, item 6B, speaking of engineering services and contracts.
Okay, yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, I'm actually going to ask our project manager, Aaron Powers, to present this item, this is something she's brought forth.
Good evening, Chair Thomas, authority members. Before you tonight, I have an item that where our staff is requesting your authority, recommend the Board of Supervisors approve two recommendations, the first is to authorize the Director of Airports to award annual consulting services contracts for the fiscal year 1920, and then also to authorize the Director or his designated to issue work orders against such contracts. The first recommendation, asking for authorization, is limited to the, the summary attachment, attachment one, which identifies two consulting contracts. Now, I want to stress that annual contracts are, are contracts for services on an annual basis, for, right now, that will be for, it will track with the fiscal year 1920, that's, that begins July 1st, and then you, you, you have that annual contract, and then work orders are issued against that contract. The two contracts that we are requesting your recommendation for tonight is for Kaufman and Associates in the amount of up to $50,000 to cover environmental and planning services, and then with Mead and Hunt, up to $100,000 to help with various engineering and, you know, well, other services is what I'll call it. Our, our preliminary budget that we anticipate will be adopted by the board next month or next week, it has budgeted up to $175,000 total for these type of contracts. Tonight, we only are bringing two contracts that total $150,000 so that we have the ability, later in the year, if we identify another, another need for a type of consultant, we can bring that onboard for the remainder. And I would, you know, the other comment that I would make is that for these type of contracts, airport staff relies on the ability to be able to be flexible and adapt to circumstances as we're working along, so sometimes we, having to track through the contract process every time you need, especially for smaller amounts, is burdensome, and, and sometimes when you have time-sensitive work, you're, you might not be able to turn things around. One example of that, that could have been a lost opportunity was that the FAA had issued supplemental AI Airport Improvement Plan funding and opened it up to airports that weren't originally on the list to apply for that supplemental funding. They issued, when they did open it up, it had a very short timeframe for turnaround, and because we had a annual contract in place, we were able to utilize the consultant through a work order to just go ahead and, and get the work done, and we ended up submitting three supplemental applications. We haven't seen any money from that as of yet, but I'm always hopeful. There were a lot of airports that did respond, but that is one instance. Additionally, we use them for independent fee estimates for some of these grant projects where we need to have, there's, the FAA has all sorts of criteria on what you need to meet in order, in your independent fee estimate, so this is the type of work that, that we typically utilize it for. The second recommendation really is, responds to the authority of the Director to write, to issue work orders against that contract, so we may have a limit of $50,000 with Kaufman, for example, that we're proposing, but the Director himself only has the authority based on the Board of Supervisors policy and the Public Works manual, the processing procedures manual, has limitations on what, on what types of projects and for how much you can write those work orders within that contract. And so even though, you know, for example, the work order is up to $100,000 each for other services, this is an amount that, that only would be applicable to the Mead and Hunt contract because Kaufman doesn't even have that much available for what we're asking for tonight.
So, does that mean that the planning engineers, you can max them out at 35K, but the operating engineers, they can go 100?
So, it really has more to do with the type of, so if you, so for the $35,000 limit has to do with whether the, the contractor trying to sign for, the project has been approved, and there's criteria for what's considered approval by the board.
So, the planning, so the planning one is, is in work where the other ones are already approved projects?
Correct, that's why you have the larger amount, and, and that authority actually has increased recently, so, but that is what we're, what we have before us tonight. Whoops.
Any, any further comments from, from staff on the?
Mr. Chairman, this is everywhere I've ever been in my career, this is standard business. It, as Aaron pointed out, it keeps staff, there's a very rigorous process for us to go through to get projects that are smaller in nature, even, they have to be treated the same as a large contract, so typically what an airport will do is at the beginning of the fiscal year, they'll renew these amounts every year, and the staff works within those guidelines and those budgets for those efforts based off those individual contracts, so for me, this is normal business.
I'm just a little surprised that, since we approved the budget of 50 and 100K, I figured that that was your approval, but the county has tighter limits than we do.
Actually, the county has higher limits than this, we're not even asking for the ability that I truly have through the county.
And the county has numerous contracts that we're approving right now, just.
Yeah, I have, I have higher abilities if I needed to for higher amounts, we're, we're just trying to establish these for these two companies.
Okay.
Cleanup questions. These two specific items tonight, they're with firms that we already have contracts with that went through a bid process to win the contracts?
So, for the annual service contract process, the, it's, it's slightly different for qualifying firms, however, we have, we have been through the selection process that meets county requirements, also federal requirements, and so as a, as, as an extra assurance, we have selected these two firms because of their familiarity with our projects and because they have been through the more rigorous selection process, then we are asking to have these type of annual contracts with them.
Okay. The reason I ask, when I first got on this board, there was an issue of, and I forget the name of the firm, but I do recall asking the question at that time, there had been a renewal, continuation renewal of a particular contract without going to a bid because, quote, "the individual did good work," and I asked, "When do these go to contracts?" And I was told there was a small amount of money. Do we target and track these contracts, like if I give $100,000 five years ago and $100,000 every year, for five years, I'm at half a million dollars, this contract is a half a million dollars, without going through a bid process?
We do, I'm going to answer that in a different way, and you tell me if you still need more clarification, we do an RFP for these type of efforts every five years, so the two companies that Aaron has brought to you tonight for a continuation, we're about two and a half years into that last selection.
Okay.
And then, so about another two and a half, and I may be off a few months or something, but every five years, we do a re-selection for these services.
Okay, the second thing is, when you do your RF, when you do your out, is there a max amount that that firm?
So, when we do those RFPs for selection of services, we don't do it based on an amount, we do each individual project before you as a board, other than these small, one off items, like if we need to spend, if we need to, if we, these are for small things that require the same process of a major contract, but we do as a, we do, we don't have the ability from the, from the resources that we have, and this is the case for most smaller airport systems, to have an own staff engineer or an own staff. So, so when we need an engineering item, these people have already been selected through our selection process, and we do that every five years, and when we need an engineering item, that's not a, a major project, but it's still an engineering item, this is the avenue that we call up and say, "We need this," and, and, and they get us this right away, and we don't have to go through two months of contract process to get a $2,000 engineering item that we might need.
We have something similar in the city that I represent, they request, you know, they're on call, we need them, they're on call, but they won the award, but there is a maximum.
Up to.
And that's what these are, these would be, these are maximums for these two companies.
Okay.
$50,000 for Kaufman and $100,000 for Mead and Hunt.
They were up to.
Thank you.
Up to, yes.
I do have one, one speaker card from our aircraft, the Advisory Commission, Airport, I'm sorry, the Airport Advisory Commission, get it on.
I think that's me.
That's you. I was going to call you by name if I couldn't get it out.
Well, it's the Advisory, Ventura County Airport's Advisory Commission, full name, but, yeah, I'm glad to be here tonight, my name is Bobby Williams, and I represent our report to Supervisor Huber from Simi Valley. So, the, our board went through this item, I think we called it six, no, seven A, it's 6B here, right?
Right.
But we discussed it at length because there was, some board members had some misunderstanding about what a work order is versus the contract itself, I think it's very clearly put out here, the maximum up to limit for the two contracts, so in the end, we voted and voted unanimously to recommend that the authority take this forward and approve it. So, any questions?
No, thank you, Bobby. So, any, any comments or questions from the authority, from Camarillo, from, from Oxnard? Okay, could I have a motion for Camarillo then?
A second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Get it carried for Camarillo.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, that's approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we are now on item seven, which is, again, both Camarillo and Oxnard, and it has to do with the updated draft bylaws for Airport Authority for both Camarillo and Oxnard.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so this one definitely precedes my arrival, so I'm hoping this is something that we're sort of wrapping up, if you will, I'm going to do the best I can to represent this item with the limited knowledge that I have to date, but our staff has done an outstanding job in working with you folks on that. I'm going to recite just real quickly what you have in the discussion, during your January 2019 meetings, your authorities expressed concern that the existing bylaws for Camarillo and Oxnard Airport Authorities were not similar to each other, your authorities also directed staff to review these bylaws in proposed language at a future special meeting. Staff worked with county council to review the bylaws and found that they needed to be consistent with a joint powers agreement between the County of Ventura and the City of Camarillo, and the County of Ventura and the City of Oxnard. As a result of those findings, staff presented a red line version of the proposed updated bylaws at the Camarillo and Oxnard Airport Authorities' special meeting on February the 4th, 2019. During this special meeting, your authorities reviewed the proposed changes to the bylaws and discussed them with your members and staff, the public also expressed their opinions. At the end of that meeting, staff and county council were directed to address the outstanding items and the proposed bylaws and to bring them back for approval at the Airport Authorities' meeting in March. At the March meeting, the U-Authorities continued to discuss the proposed changes and requested that staff and county council further address some of the proposed language. At such, as such, staff worked with council to further update these documents and is now providing the updated draft bylaws for your review and consideration of approval. The comments highlighted in yellow represent the changes proposed at the previous Airport's Authorities' meeting and allowed by the Joint Powers Agreements, and that was really the introduction to this, and that's about all the knowledge I have, so I'll try to help answer any questions, but I'm turning it back to you.
Okay, I have one speaker card, Mark Sullivan, did you want to address the authority?
I spoke on this matter at the February special meeting, there's an internal inconsistency in both of these bylaws, and it exacerbates the inconsistency between the apparent, the on-paper mandate of the Airport Authority and the on-paper responsibilities of the Advisory Commission. As I said at the beginning in the general comments, I, this has, I think, needs to be rationalized. What grabs me the most, that in both bylaws as proposed, they say that the authority shall not take any action unless that action is expressly authorized by the Joint Powers Agreement. Well, the Joint Powers Agreement, as this was originally set up, the whole idea of the authority, was that certain matters would overlap between the county and the city, and that's, that was to, to coordinate the two so that there was no overstepping of either party's jurisdiction and all parties were represented. As a result, the Joint Powers Agreement deals essentially with noise, zoning, general community issues that would be of joint interest to both the city and the county. Now, this agreement, as it's written, extends the authority, the states of the authority, on one hand, we say it's expressly limited to the Joint Powers Agreement, but then you go to the general statement of what the Airport Authority is to do, and it says, I think inconsistently, that the authority shall not take, excuse me, wrong section, before any matter related to the standards, and the standards are very general, covers both operations, use, everything you could think of, is submitted to the council or the board, the authority shall review and make recommendations to the council and the board as to application of the adopted standards, et cetera. Now, I look at those two things, that makes it sound as if the authority should be the plenary final say on, you know, what's done at the airport, but then you go, and you look at the ordinance dealing with the Airport Advisory Commission, and it says that it is the advisory body advising the board on all matters rated, related to the operation, et cetera, et cetera, of the airport. So, the question is, which one is, you know, is the body that has this sort of plenary default jurisdiction? It seems from the documents, as they're written, that that's the commission. In practice, the commission has brought its recommendations via the authority, then to the board, that's fine, but that's not what this says. So, this has a, the real problem is that expressly authorized language, limited to the Joint Powers Agreement, is actually a restriction of your jurisdiction, and if it's a restriction of your jurisdiction by, under our current practice, it would by definition be a restriction of the Airport Advisory Commission's jurisdiction in conflict with the ordinance. I don't think that's what's intended, but I think that's what's, what's happening here. You know, I really do think that these jurisdictions have to be rationalized, and certainly you don't want to be restricting the, the airport citizens' input, which is the way the ordinance reads now for the Airport Advisory Commission.
Okay, thank you. Can, can, can I just make a comment? I, I think from one of the values of gray hair, is you're, you've been around a long time, but the Advisory Commission was, was pre-authority, it was done at the earlier time before even maybe Camarillo Airport was established, and there was a lot of political conflict in between county and city when Camarillo, Oxnard Air Force Base came, Camarillo Airport. At the time, and I'm not sure what the date was on the advisory setup.
Actually, it's what, and I agree with you, what, originally the authority was there, the, the ordinance 3480 that basically reenacted the commission, that was in 1980, so it postates the Joint Powers Agreement, which was 1976.
Yeah.
So, what you're saying, I think, is historically is what most people perceive, but legally, it looks like the, the final say was the 1980 ordinance, which has the Advisory Commission being the plenary.
And, and the way that it's currently set up, each of the supervisors appoints two members to the Airport Advisory Commission, and they're, in, in the time that I've been involved in the authority, I always expected that the two commissioners reported back to their supervisor, because there's 10 people on the board, each one has two, and so the advice that they're giving to the supervisors is to their two super, you know, they're two people advising their supervisor, and I don't, and I'm not sure if that always happens, but that's how I envisioned it supposedly happening, and, you know, there is, there is obviously, you know, you could say, "Do you need both of them?" And it was more interesting when my wife was on the commission and I was on the authority, so.
So, so what you're, Mark, what you're saying is you're looking for clarity, is that what it is?
Essentially, yes, and, and the word expressly, expressly limiting the jurisdiction of the authority, or rather, limiting the authority's jurisdiction to matters expressly stated in the Joint Powers Agreement, I think unnecessarily narrows your jurisdiction, and it basically, to the extent that the current structure is, the commission is kind of the general community input, and it gets a second look by of the general community input, and it gets a second look by the authority, and then it goes to the supervisors, that I, there's nothing wrong with that system at all, but these bylaws, by narrowing your jurisdiction, really makes that, you know, illicit at least, it's outside the scope of the bylaws. And the system of having this intermediary approach, having commission recommendation go through the authority, nowhere is that put into writing. I think that should be clarified.
I don't think we have any problems with that.
Yeah, there may not be, there may in fact have been no problems. Where the problem would come up, we've also had that issue about, you know, conflicts of interest and the like, and I think I've made my views very clear that I don't think the conflict of interest laws is strict as county council thinks it is. But were that to come up, then whose jurisdiction is, you know, the scope of each body's jurisdiction could become very important.
Okay, thank you. I have one card from David Tims.
Well, good evening. My name is Dave Tims. I'd like to address one paragraph that's common to both the Camarillo bylaws and also the Oxnard bylaws as it relates to public comment. If you look at item four, public comment period, and it reads, "Public comment period. Citizens wishing to speak to the authority on an airport-related item must fill out a speaker card and submit it to the secretary." The purpose of the public comment is to address an item or speak on an item that is not an agenda item. And so if it's not an agenda item, you'd discuss it, you'd present that on, at the public comment period. And then if you look at either page 7A7 or 7A14, you'll see a paragraph in there that's common to both the Oxnard bylaws and the Camarillo bylaws. And it reads, "The authority shall, at its meeting, set aside time for public comment. It shall allow public comment on matters within the authority's subject matter jurisdiction. The authority shall give fair, open-minded consideration to public comment and make its deliberation and disposition public to all matters on the agenda." Matters on the agenda. So if it's not a matter on the agenda, then it gets disregarded. It's here, it is clear that if it's not an item on the agenda, it gets disregarded. So if it's not an item, if it is an item on the public comment, it should be considered. I'd ask that wording be added to the paragraph and the bylaws, such as, "For public comments on items not on the agenda, the authority may give fair and open-minded consideration for having those matters included on a subsequent agenda for deliberation and disposition." And I can tell you that if such a sentence or statement in the bylaws is not presented, or not included in the bylaws, anything that's presented on public comment would be disregarded. And I don't think that's the intent of public comments, to disregard. I think it should be considered and carried forward, if necessary, to an item on a subsequent agenda.
Items not in the agenda, items not in the agenda, but if you bring up something up, and items not in the agenda, it could probably be dice in the future. Is that correct?
And that's been the way, that's been the way this authority has handled it. There's been multiple items in public comment that we have asked to be agendized.
Agendized, yeah.
The bylaws say just the opposite.
No, no, it says we can't, it says we can't talk about it that day. It doesn't say we can't ask that the staff present it as an agenda item later for another meeting.
Specifically excludes it, if it's not an agenda item.
No, it says you can't do, the way I interpret that is it's not on, if it's not on tonight's agenda, then we can't sit there and discuss it. But that doesn't mean that the authority can't ask or tell the airport staff to put it on agenda for the future. And we've done that many times.
That's right. That's a proper, Mr. Pappella?
Just a question, sir. Where exactly in this document that you were talking about?
Page 7A7.
Second to the last paragraph?
Page 7A7. Next to the last paragraph. It's Article III, the fourth paragraph, if you're on seven.
Where is the wording that you state does not allow us to talk to public comment?
The second line and then next to the last paragraph. "The authority shall give fair and open-minded consideration to public comment and may make and make a deliberation and disposition public in all matters on the agenda."
Okay, my understanding, sir, if it's on the agenda, we got to do something. We either table it, act on it, vote down, whatever. We can't dodge the bullet. But items that come up at public comment, we have the opportunity, doesn't mean it happens, you're absolutely right, doesn't mean that it gets addressed. We have the opportunity under board members' comments to request that it be put on the agenda.
It doesn't say that.
I know it doesn't say that, but that's, that is.
And I would tell you, it'll be.
Not always does the public's comments get put on the agenda. I'm aware of that also. But I don't have a problem with your concern. But I do want you to understand, if somebody brings up something, the price of tea in China, it's not on the agenda, we can't talk about it. Had anything to do with the airport, somebody on the board could request it to be put on the agenda. When it gets put on, that's up to, I suppose, the chair and the general manager, but that is how it works.
Am I understanding you then that?
Unless the county council.
If it's an item under public comment that's not on the agenda, you can discuss it?
The mayor, the mayor of Oxnard is not here right now.
It's a Brown Act.
The mayor and I got nailed for doing just that by the district attorney.
It's a Brown Act issue.
They can't do it.
Under public comment, you can discuss it?
No, on items not on the agenda, where there is a public comment, the opportunity just like the very beginning of this meeting, items not on the agenda coming up, and if we get into a discussion about what somebody brought up, other than a time when, at the end of the meeting where it's.
Authority comments.
Yeah, authority comments, and request it to come back, I can get nailed, and I don't want to get nailed again.
Under the Brown Act.
Because of the Brown Act. It's not agendized. And they didn't hurt us, but it's embarrassing.
Well, I'm going to tell you, I'm confused.
Well, then I would request, then I would request this.
Under public comment, public comment period, I bring up a subject of, any subject that's not on the agenda, you can.
Then to staff one, we just clarify it and make sure you know that.
And if I'm your request, we get the county council sitting here, correct?
Right.
I would appreciate you to clarify, so that everybody understands, the public and us, to the best of your ability. Thank you.
Right.
And thank you for the question, sir.
I don't think there's anything I can add to what you've already said. It's a Brown Act issue. If it's not on the agenda, the authority cannot take any action on it, and indeed should not make extensive comment on it, have discussions, that's what.
That's exactly.
Is there, is there any guarantee from the public side of the podium that everything that is brought up on public comment, not on the agenda, will be agendized?
No.
May it be agendized.
Well, maybe, maybe, but it.
May it be agendized.
Yes, it may, but there's no guarantee it will. Is that correct?
That's correct, yes.
And David, and the other piece, though, is, and I know you know how well to work
it, every one of the persons on this authority can be communicated with and can then reach out to Kip and the rest of his staff to say, "Hey, we would like such-and-such a thing brought up and agendized." And I have a concern, and, so it doesn't have to be just at the authority meeting and only during the authority comments that this stuff can take place.
Well, what I'm finding is that anything that's brought up under public comment that's not on the agenda is just dismissed. Thank you.
I'm sorry that you feel that way.
Thank you.
So we now have to, let's go with the, any, first of all, I'm sorry, from the Ventura Airport Advisory Commission, was there any comments that you wanted to share from your meeting? Did you have any, that wasn't an item on your, on your agenda, right? Okay. Just want to make sure. All right, so for the authorities, any comments before we take a vote?
On the Oxnard side, we.
Oh, we're not going to take a vote yet.
Okay, so, okay, go ahead.
On the Oxnard side, you know, we are, our members are looking at, we're missing a member. We're missing the mayor here, and we'd like to take additional time so we can all deliberate and have the mayor be here also, you know, to give any additional.
Will he be back or not?
I don't think he'll be.
I don't know, and I asked the gentleman sitting next to him, and there's no.